Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Kent City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 26, 2020, and this is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 coronavirus emergency. So, welcome to anyone that is joining us today. Kim, could you verify if we have all council members present?
I have all council members present and accounted for it, and thank you, Mayor Ralph, for attending.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda from staff or council?
None.
President.
Seeing none, we will move forward and get started with presentations today. The first presentation that we have is from our Kent Police Youth Board, and this is an amazing group of young people who mentor other students in their schools, and they do presentations and put on a Great Game of Life workshop in December that promotes students making good choices. And I would like to introduce Stacy Judd, who oversees the youth board, and we've also got some youth board members joining us today. So, welcome, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Troutner and council members for having us. And I also see that Mayor Ralph is on the call as well. So, thank you, Mayor Ralph, for having us. We do, we have a lot of youth board members that are on the call, and they are going to be presenting each portion of our project. And I am going to go ahead here and share my screen so you all can see it. And I will give a little bit of a rundown on the presentation or the project that the youth board has worked on. Can everybody see my screen okay?
Looks great, Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have to say before we begin that I am very proud of our youth board's work on this project, and I'm going to explain a little bit about what it is, and then they will go ahead and present their sections of it. And youth board, while you're presenting your section, before you begin, if you could just tell them who you are, where you go to school, your grade, and then maybe how long you've been on youth board right before you present, that would be, that would be great. So, the youth board earned a grant from King County Public Health, and the focus is on youth marijuana prevention, but it also includes vaping. And so, part of the requirements of the grant is that they complete something called an M vape survey. And basically, what that survey is, is it a survey of our local vape and marijuana stores? And knowing that we don't have any marijuana stores within our city, we were allowed to go to other marijuana shops outside of our city limits. As part of the community surveys, the youth board broke up and partnered with our police department's neighborhood response team to conduct the surveys because we figured that those officers are very familiar with their sectors of the city. So, for example, we had a group that went with Officer Jan Prusa to the West Hill of Kent. We had another group that went down in the valley with Officer Trevor Woolcott. And then our third group went on the East Hill with Officer Eric Steffes. And so, what that did is it allowed the youth board members the chance to get to know these pretty cool officers, and it also gave the officers a chance to talk about these areas with the youth board so that they could gain more familiarity with some, maybe some of the crimes that happen in the area. And I'm pretty sure that they shared some, some pretty good stories with them also. After the surveys were created, each group or had to create a map of the area that surrounded the store. And so, part of that, they had to look at what things around that vape store or that marijuana store are areas that might attract youth. So, for example, like parks, or restaurants, or churches. And so, they had to create a map that showed that, as well as taking pictures of any ads that these stores might have. So, is the ad, or is the store plastered with ads? And do these, some of these ads attract to youth, that kind of thing? So, you'll see some pictures as well of the maps that each youth board did. Then another part of the grant is that we present to local leadership. So, thank you all for letting us present to you. And then we have started running some ads called You Can on the Kent Police Department's Facebook page, and it focuses on what youth can do and marijuana can't do. So, like, you can get that scholarship, marijuana can't. So, we run those, and then the youth board will create their own You Can ads. And then we also have to do a media awareness presentation to younger students. So, for that, since COVID-19 has happened, we are just going to create a presentation and send it out so parents can share it with their students. And this is a picture of two of our groups before they went out on their, on their surveys. So, those are fun. And so, our first youth board member that will present is Daniel. So, Daniel, if you want to unmute yourself, that would be great.
Hello. My name is Daniel. I am a senior at Kent Ridge High School, and I've been in Kent Youth Board for about two years, I think. So, I was in charge of Easy Tobacco Plus and the Kent Smoke Shop. And these two smoke shops are like fairly close to each other, so I decided to clump them into one. So, as you can see here, they are pretty close. There's just like an intersection that keeps them divided, but there was quite a few restaurants. As you see, I color-coded the map on a Word document. The orange colors were restaurants and food places, and I noticed that there was a lot of pubs and like more adult restaurants near these areas. There was quite a lot of residential areas that were pretty close to these two shops. There was apartment, and then there was like a few neighborhood residential areas behind the Kent Smoke Shop. And apartments were, there was a lot of apartments next to the green field. That big yellow box and rectangles were the apartments. There was a few auto shops and gas stations, which are the navy blue. The gray areas were government buildings. Those were post offices and courthouse. And then, as you can see, the two black boxes are labeled as the Kent Smoke Shop and the Easy Tobacco. The dark, the darker blue was Kent Elementary School. Yeah, and then the blue lines are the river, and then the black is the road. So, as you can see, there is an elementary school that is fairly close to these two shops. It did seem a bit impoverished, but there is like just a little bit litters on the side of the roads. It doesn't seem that it's being taken care of, but there wasn't too much litter that it looked out of control. While we surveyed this area, there weren't many, there weren't any ads at all on, on smoking or vaping. The only ads we're seeing were on the shops, and there was a lot of colorful ones and a lot of ads that included like neons and like fruity flavors. And that may attract the younger audience because it is near an elementary school. And I feel like although it is close to that elementary school, it may attract some younger audiences, but I feel like at the same time, it might not because there are a lot of other stores and restaurants like Papa Murphy's that may distract their attention from these smoke shops.
Great. Thank you, Daniel, very much. Next up, we have Tiffany.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany Nguyen. I'm in 12th grade. I go to Kent Ridge High School, and this is my second year on youth board. So, I was assigned the Mary Jane's House of Glass and the Evergreen Market. And from the map, you can see that the Mary Jane's location is right above the Evergreen Market. So, there are a lot of busy restaurants, family-owned businesses, and gas stations around the area. So, the community, neither of the locations have a heavy set of ads, or actually none, none at all. So, during the ride-along, I was informed that the 76th gas station tends to have a lot of car racers at night, and those car racers tend to be around my age, up to twenties. And the two locations are located right on a busy street that people are constantly passing by on their way home from work, after shopping, and going out with their friends, or like eating around the area. So, these two shops are also located right near the stoplights, which can attract a lot of people's attention when people are stopping by, or stopping at a red light. Yeah.
Thank you, Tiffany. And both of those are in the city of Renton. But like I mentioned earlier, because we do not have marijuana stores in the city of Kent, we are allowed to go outside, but this is just right across the street from our border. Thank you, Tiffany. Next, we have Haley.
Hi, my name is Haley Deng. I'm a junior at Kent Lake High School. This is actually my first year on youth board. Like, I just joined like two months ago. So, for my map, if you can pull that up, I have, my store is VapoRama. It's actually located in Kent, not Renton, like the other ones. So, for my map, I have the VapoRama store in the black square, to just point that out. And located next to it is a Mexican restaurant, and then we have other restaurants, and the pink buildings are the residential buildings. So, it's like neighborhoods and mobile home parks. This area is actually pretty close. I wish I scaled the map a little bit more, but it's actually in a fairly close proximity to Mill Creek Middle School and Kent Elementary School. So, but it's not close enough. I don't think that students would walk all the way there, although I think maybe the restaurants might be a pull factor. But I don't think that is too much of a problem. There don't seem to be much ads that encourage the vaping or smoking sales, but they can be only found on the front windows of this actual store. It's close to the library as well, but I don't believe that it is too close to like walk towards. It's located in a designated business slash strip mall area that is surrounded by residential buildings, neighborhoods, and mobile home parks. So, the only youth at risk at that point is just the people who live around it. So, it is located around downtown Kent. And so, if students were to walk around, because it's such an urbanized area, they are at risk of being exposed to that. So, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Tiffany, or Tiffany, Haley. This is Haley. Thank you, Haley. And this is like literally Haley's first month on youth board, and she's doing awesome. So, thank you, Haley.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have Northwest Smokes.
This is Kim. I am from Kent Ridge, and I'm currently a senior. So, for my first location, I had Northwest Smokes, which is located on East Hill along 240th. And you'll notice that with the locations on East Hill, they're very close to each other. So, for my area, it's very open to the public as it's located in a strip mall. And it's open to children access with a lot of fast food attractions around it. For example, there are, there's a donut place, there's Popeyes, there's Jack in the Box, Starbucks, Fred Meyer's right across the street. And then right, right behind it, there are a lot of apartment complexes and houses so that can open up the area to children. And most of the ads for smoking and vaping are from the shop itself, but it isn't as prominent as other shops. And since it is located close, in close proximity to other tobacco shops, that gives the public more, like, the youth more options of which tobacco shops they want to go to. Next slide, please.
There you go.
Thank you. And this is Cigar Land. So, as you can see, compared to the other shop, it has a lot more ads, and it's very colorful so that it's, so that it attracts more kids. And it's located in a very high-traffic area with apartment, apartment complexes right behind it, which is like super close. You don't even have to drive. You just walk, and then there's a bunch of apartment complexes. And it's placed near, like I said, high-traffic and Kent Meridian, which is a very diverse and populated high school. So, with that, it's very accessible to the youth of the school, and that's about it for me.
Thank you very much, Kim. Okay, next, we have Smoke and Vape, the Kent Smoke Shop.
Okay. Hi, my name is Andy. I'm a senior at Kent Ridge, and this is my third year on Kent Police Youth Board. So, my shop was a smoke and vape, and I had in front of me that it was in Kent. I didn't mean to indicate like a whole other smoke shop. So, next slide, please. So, as seen in the previous slide, there were many advertisements on the shop itself, like plastered on the outer windows and surrounding the door, though on the surrounding area, we did not see any at all. The shop itself is actually located by a pretty busy intersection that has many youth and family places nearby that make it accessible and like attractive towards them. And on my, like, a bit down on the other side of the intersection, there's an elementary, elementary school. But I don't think this is much of a pull factor at all, the shop, because they were not that far, especially taking into account that they're elementary schoolers. And this smoke shop itself is also located pretty close to the other two smoke shops, so this could potentially bring in more people. But once again, I don't think that's the issue. As you see, like, there's many restaurants surrounding it, like McDonald's, a Starbucks, Taco Bell. And then there's also like family places, like for groceries and gyms and stuff. So, once again, I feel like it should be okay. It won't get as much attention. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Greenside Glass. That should be Maddie.
Yep.
Say, who are you, and where do you go to school?
Right. I'm Maddie. I am a freshman at Kent Lake, and I've been on youth board for like three years, I think.
Excellent. Thank you, Maddie.
Yeah. Um, so, at Greenside Glass, there's like, there isn't very much advertising. There's only some on the building, and that's about all there is. And it's by a church, which, I mean, that's a very public place because a lot of people like. There's also like an inn, which is a place where people get to like go because if they're like traveling or something. And then restaurants, like, there's at least three restaurants around the area of the smoke shop. So, there weren't any like parks, or schools, or daycares. So, kids, like, there aren't very many like ways to, for kids to get there, but like the restaurants and the inns and the churches are ways to like show where, or to like, the kids definitely can like see it.
And then there's your picture, Maddie, right there. And you can see the hashtag on the, the building is quite interesting. It's hashtag we can chill. And again, this is not located in the city. It is located in the city of Des Moines, since it's actually an actual marijuana shop. The next one is Easy Smoke &amp; More, and this was originally done by our youth board Kimberly, or youth board member Kimberly, but I think, Kayden, are you sharing this one?
Yes, I am.
All right, take it away. You can introduce yourself, too.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Kayden Hollis. I'm a freshman at Kent Ridge, and I've been on youth board for three years. I will be doing Kim's slide and mine. So, you can see the smoke shop is, there's a lot of stuff in the area. There's a beauty salon, right, that looks like about right next to the actual shop. There's a, two gas sta, three gas stations in the area. That's apparently the, the, as they were driving, they were told that there was a, like a murder scene there, some place of crime, so it's a place of crime. There's a Dollar Tree coffee shop. So, like, these are areas that children will be going. It's like hang out, have fun. Yeah. Next slide. Shop isn't located near a school, but they're all restaurants and gas stations. So, they would, the shop, the smoke shop would still bring in youths. The areas surrounding the shops are rundown. Updates haven't really been made, so it's not really a nice, well-kept area. So, it could attract not good people. The win, the decor on the windows helps tell what the shop is, so people would know, like, oh, that's smoke shop. And then there were colorful ads, products, that not fully reaching out to youth, but like youth will see them. And the parking lot surrounding the shop is very littered, so like no one keeps the area clean.
Okay. Thank you, Kayden. We are going to hear from Maddie again. This store was originally done by Emily, but Emily is taking driver's ed right now. So, Maddie, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, around the smoke shop, there were like two Ladybug cafes. It's not on the map, but there were two of them. And there were a bunch of like empty parking lots, and there was a bunch of like homeless people, like around the store. And there's apartment buildings, and there's restaurants, and there's a college, which is across the street from the vape shop, which, I mean, kids are probably gonna go there.
Oh, sorry. Here, I'll go to the next slide for you, Maddie. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, there were like apartment buildings, and there was like a college around there, which those are very like public, like underage kids, like mainly in the like apartment building. And there was just a lot of like garbage and homeless people like all around the place. There was, there weren't very much like advertisement.
Great. Thank you, Maddie. And then the last slide, the last business that we have is again from Kayden. So, go ahead, Kayden.
Hello. So, I, this, there wasn't much in the area that would attract kids. It was, uh, I wasn't actually at, I had other things I had to do that day, so I couldn't come. But I was looking at maps, and it was not very, there wasn't much. There's the church nearby, so that would maybe bring, like, youth would see it, but not too much. There's the Metro by T-Mobile. That might bring a couple more, more youth would see that since phones, technology, they would want to be near that stuff, so the, have it. There was a Ladybug, there's a Ladybug Cafe right across the street, and the only real- And the only real food restaurant but was. Um, in the area was a Pacific Thai Cuisine. And then there was a. Caliber collision, so that might be teenagers if they get a crash, but not too much youth. Next slide. Um, looking at pictures, the area around the shop was full, was full of litter. But and not many two places were open, so it's not like a well, it's not a clean area. Um, there was a ladybug cafe across the street, the T-Mobile and the Caliber Collision. Um, and then the restaurant, so that area didn't have too much that would bring the youth. But like only a couple places.
Great, thank you, Kayden. Okay, that is the end um of our youth board presentation. Um, does, are there any questions for them?
Thank you so much, Stacy. Um, I think this youth perspective is so important. Because it brings attention to the places in our community that can influence our young people. From the slides that you saw, you know, the colorful ads, the places that are nearby. And I just wanna thank all of the board members for stepping up to be a part of this. And um mentoring our young people and actually being leaders in our community. You guys are doing a really great job and it's making a difference. So thank you so much. Um, any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Voice, do you have a question or comment?
Just a comment. Hey, great presentation. Very excited to see our youth, as you said, council president being involved in our community and our neighborhood. Like it tells a lot of passion about what they're doing, so uh, I would say kudos and thank you, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, council president.
Councilmember Lamar, did you have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you'd called me.
Yep, go ahead.
Breaking up there for a second. Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank the youth for um putting the time and the effort into these presentations. That were very informative and very well presented and put together. And I really enjoyed the maps. And it really, it's uh, you know, we can see that these businesses are in our community. But it's really helpful to like see where they're, where they're at in relation to the, to other attractions and other types of zones. Um, yeah, and so I think just to my colleagues, I think it might be interesting, you know, I don't know. It seems like the signage is mostly with the smoke shops. Um, and I'm wondering, you know, I don't know if it's, there's anything we can look at in our sign code to maybe reduce some of that. Um, if we feel it is, you know, really reaching out to the youth or something to be done that way. Um, but mostly just thank you to the youth for this presentation. I enjoyed it.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our seniors. We will definitely miss you on the youth board. I know every year we have people that graduate. Stacy, how can someone join our youth board?
So um they can join youth board by emailing me. Uh, my email is S J U D D at KentWah.gov. That's the best way to do it.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from council members before we move on? Alright, thank you so much, Stacy, and thank you to our entire youth board for um going out and doing this. Um, late work and putting together this great presentation to share with all of us.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us too. We really appreciate it.
Alright, moving on in our agenda, we are going to welcome Suzanne Smith to talk about. Um, consultant service agreement with OTAC Incorporated for the Mill Creek at Seventy-Sixth Avenue Flood Protection Improvement. Structural and stream geometry. So welcome.
Thank you very much, council president and council members and also Mayor Ralph. I'm here to present to you a consultant services agreement with OTAC Incorporated for structural and stream geometry design. For the Mill Creek at Seventy-Sixth Avenue South Flood Protection Improvement Projects. Photos on this page were taken just over five months ago in December of two thousand nineteen. Next slide, please. This project consists of improving the Mill Creek conveyance capacity, replacing insufficient culverts with bridges. Habitat improvements, installing vegetation, and raising Seventy-Sixth Avenue South above the FEMA base flood elevation. This project is funded by two grants from the state legislature, which are managed by the Department of Commerce totaling three million dollars. And also the city storm drainage fund. The OTAC consultant contract would provide structural design for three bridges and retaining walls. A technical information report, stream geometry analysis and design following Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife guidelines. And also construction plans and specifications. Next slide, please. This project is in an urbanized reach of Mill Creek that is near approximately fifty-eight hundred businesses employing more than seventy-seven thousand people. These photos show the frequent flooding that occurs on Seventy-Sixth Avenue South. This project will reduce the chances of reoccurring flooding. Seventy-Sixth Avenue South is in the heart of the essential Kent Manufacturing and Industrial Center. Which includes over forty-five million square feet of warehouse and industrial space. The photos on this slide show that during high flood events, there is little or no separation between Seventy-Sixth Avenue South and Mill Creek. Next slide, please. This slide shows the locations of the three culverts that would be replaced with bridges. On the top right, there is a photo of one of the existing culvert crossings. The existing culverts are frequently underwater even when Seventy-Sixth Avenue South is not flooded. The photo on the bottom right is an example of a similar bridge and stream geometry. That would be designed by OTAC Incorporated for this project. Before you this afternoon is the OTAC Incorporated Consultant Contract. That was the last slide in the presentation and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Suzanne. Any questions or comments from council members?
Madam President.
Councilmember Thomas, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Suzanne, that was a wonderful concise presentation. I think you did an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, so do I have any objections to moving this forward? Um, the consultant agreement with OTAC. If there are no objections, we will go ahead and move this to the consent calendar. Alright, thank you so much. Moving on in our agenda, Eric Preston is going to talk about the. Uh, resolution for the residential traffic calming program.
Thank you, council president, council members and Mayor Ralph. Um, so yeah, this is Eric Preston. I'm city traffic engineer. I'm here to update you and present the update to the residential traffic calming program. The RTCP. Um, and so this is my virtual presence since you can't see me in person. And on the next slide, um, we are, uh, last time I was here was March twenty-fourth, so about two months ago. Um, I gave the committee a presentation on the proposed changes and so much of this is review. Uh, the current program was established through Resolution eighteen seventeen passed in October of two thousand nine. Um, it only applies to local residential and residential collector streets, so no arterials here. Um, so just to give you a, a structure of the program. First, the, a resident would make a request and the city could conduct a traffic study and we would analyze the results. Um, if the results were below the threshold, uh, then we would send the results to a resident, give them the option of speed watch. If it's above the threshold, then we would begin phase one. Uh, phase one, we'd meet with the neighborhood, increase awareness. Give them, um, you know, implement non-permanent speed control measures. And then conduct a second study to see if that helped. The second study was above the threshold, we'd move to phase two. Uh, form a committee of the residents, look at engineering solutions and create a plan, mail out a ballot. And if uh, the neighborhood supported the ballot, we'd uh, design that and move to construction. And so, but through, with that program, typically less than one request qualified each year. Um, and it was, you know, for different reasons. Um, often the eighty-fifth percentile speed was just not high enough. Um, or uh, sometimes phase one wasn't completed for various reasons. Either uh, there was no traffic watch done, or maybe it was started but not completed, things like that. Or sometimes it was not a residential street and just did not qualify. Um, and so just to clarify, the eighty-fifth percentile speed that we talk about is the speed at which eighty-five percent of traffic is traveling at. Or below. And so this program update uh would shorten the process, would take out that phase one. Uh, we get straight to the counts, evaluations, we would make decisions quickly and only consider physical devices. Uh, we consider other factors besides speed that impact the livability of the neighborhood. And that would improve the chances of implementation. And so when we did this, we looked around at surrounding jurisdictions. We borrowed heavily from Seattle, Bellevue. Um, and especially Federal Way where I spent uh six years prior to coming to Kent, um, and my experience there. So next slide. So getting started, um, a resident, you know, they, the public can contact us any way they want. Uh, the Residential Traffic Calming Program has its own webpage and its own web form um that they can contact us with. Uh, they can mail us a letter, call us on the phone, send us an email or fill out an online citizen request form elsewhere on the city's website. And so through early engagement, we want a way to get consensus that there really is a problem out there. Uh, we want contact from residents of five different addresses. And then we go to data collection. Uh, we define the study area, collect a full week's worth of speed and traffic volume data. And so when we start looking at other factors, we look at, is there a, a traffic imbalance? I know, is there a cut through? Is there a crash history? Are there pedestrian facilities? Do they have sidewalks? Um, are they close to a school, a park or a transit stop? Or are they on a school walking route? And we award points for each category. Next slide. And so um, on the right, you can see the uh, how we assign points. And so fifty points are required to qualify uh for the program. So ten miles per hour over the speed limit uh still qualifies you for the program just as it did before. Uh, but we also award points for many other things. I can see traffic volumes there. Uh, the points awarded depend on the functional classification of the street. And um, the classification is determined really based on traffic volume. A local residential street is supposed to be very low volume and connect to collector streets. Collector streets are, you know, slightly more volume, but still not a primary through route. They connect to collectors and arterials. And arterials are your high-volume streets. And so just because maybe there's a house on that street doesn't make it a local residential street. But we award points appropriately. Uh, we look at uh, looking for cut through. We see if there is a volume imbalance of more than two and a half times. Uh, you know, greater traffic in one direction than the opposite direction. A recent example was actually Hazel Avenue between James and Smith, where we had seven times the volume in one direction as we did the other. And so in that case, they would get points for that. They also did crash history and we award points for each crash. And those points increase with severity. Uh, we look to see if there are sidewalks on the street. Are there on both sides, one side, no sides? Uh, we look to see if they're close to a, a park, a school or a transit stop. If they border that street, um, you know, five points. If it's on a designated walking route, three points. If it's, doesn't have any of those, but it's really close, maybe within a quarter of a mile, then that's one point. And next slide. So if it qualifies, then we go out and count again after eight weeks to verify that uh we were within, you know, ten percent. That we're close to our original data. And we schedule a neighborhood meeting at the local elementary school, the library, something convenient uh for those residents. We sit down with them, we make a plan. Uh, we discuss different options for engineering solutions and their possible locations. And we finalize the plan in coordination with uh school district transportation, with police, uh with fire. And then we mail ballots to every affected home in the study area. And we require a fifty percent return rate. And then of those return ballots, we need two thirds to vote in favor. Next slide. So if it passes, we build it as soon as possible. So city staff finalize the design details. And we conduct a follow-up study after about six to twelve months. And so the next steps, uh, I'm here to address any comments or answer any questions you might have. And if the committee, since this is the committee's second look at this, if you're comfortable with the program update. You can move to adopt the resolution. So I'm, this is the last slide. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions or comments on this program? Alright, so seeing no hands raised or any mics turned on, this resolution or these improvements do. Um, require us to adopt the resolution and move it forward to consent calendar. Are there any objections? Alright, we will move it forward then to the consent calendar. Thank you, everyone. Moving on in the agenda, I'd like to welcome April to talk about the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-six Transportation Improvement Program. Welcome, April.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, oh, I'm sorry, council member, or I'm sorry, Mayor Ralph, did you have a comment or a question before we move on?
I did. Thank you, Council President Turner. Um, I just want to say thank you to Eric and our whole transportation team and council for moving this forward. Um, it's something that I have been hearing about, um, not only as a council member, but be since, but since I became mayor. Neighborhoods frustration with the process, kind of um, the, the. The not certainty in um how things move forward. And then the fact that there wasn't necessarily criteria for things that made each neighborhood individual. So I'm very excited to see this um move forward and want to say thank you to everyone for all their work on it.
Great, thank you. Alright, April, go ahead and take it away.
Alright, so I am back again to talk about the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-six Six Year Transportation Improvement Program. Um, this is the last step before going to a public hearing. So it's not, I'm here to present the draft twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-six Six Year Transportation Program, otherwise known as the TIP. The city is required by state law to update the six-year plan annually. Projects moved from the Transportation Master Plan or TMP to the Transportation Improvement Program or TIP. The TMP feeds the TIP projects, moving from the planning to design and construction. In the TIP, all projects must be funded or have a reasonable expectation of funding. Public works, economic community development and finance staff work together during the update. One big note, to be considered for most grants, projects must be in the TIP. Next slide, please. The focus of this update is adding projects eligible for grants due in this year in twenty-twenty. The focus of the next update, the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven TIP, will be integrating projects from the TMP update as well as upcoming twenty-twenty-one grant opportunities. Next slide, please. So grants are competitive and Kent competes against other cities for available funding. Federal aid programs fall under two agencies, the Puget Sound Regional Council or PSRC. And the Washington State Department of Transportation or WashDOT as direct grant programs from the federal government. PSRC grants include five grant programs, of which four are due this year. All but the Transportation Alternative Alternatives Program are due this year. WashDOT includes the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which has two grant opportunities both through this year. As well as a railroad safety grant that is due next week, or at the end of this week, actually, I believe. In addition, direct federal grant programs include things like infra and build grants. Next slide, please. Straight grants include four sources, WashDOT, the Transportation Improvement Board, the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board. And the local appropriations. We currently have funding for TIP for the Seventy-Sixth Avenue South to. For two ta- two point five million dollars. Next slide, please. There are three types of changes that I want to go over. Most of these you've seen before in the last presentation. There's projects being removed, there's new projects, and there's projects with significant changes to either the project descriptions or their limits. Which means essentially the two are from the starter endpoint. Next slide, please. Good news is that three projects are being removed from the TIP because they are complete. Two of them are South Two Twenty-Four Street Extension Projects, a phase one and phase two. And then Kent Valley Flashing Yellow Arrows, Left Turn Arrows, which is an HSIP grant um that was one in twenty-seventeen. Next slide, please. Eric Preston, who you just heard from, and Rob Brown analyzed the last five years of collision data. And his existing conditions to develop two projects that match the Safe Roster School Grant Criteria. This resulted in two projects being pulled out of the TIP and two pro- new projects being added that hit the criteria a little bit better. Next slide, please. Two projects are being added for upcoming transportation, Transportation Improvement Board Grant Opportunities. And one project, which is new and you have not seen before, is being adding for, added for a WashDOT program. This is the Meet Me on Meeker School Furnish Improvement in front of Kent Elementary School. Next slide, please. And then four projects are being added. And then four projects are being added for upcoming federal grants. The first is a Puget Sound Regional Council Preservation Program, which is for South Two Twelve Street. There's two projects for Highway Safety Improvement Program, or HSIP, and then the Road Safety Grant I mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. As detailed in April, when reviewing the existing TIP, three projects are flagged to be updated for their project description. Of these three projects, two projects have been updated, and the third, the Midway Subarea TOD Street, will be updated later this year. Next slide, please. Five projects had updates to their start or endpoint. There are the Three Seventy-Sixth Avenue North Projects. There is no changes to the actual descriptions, rather, they were updated to match the grants that were put in. The second is South Two Twelve Street Project was updated to match another grant for preservation that was submitted this year. And the last is South Two Twenty-Four Street Extension Phase Two. It was split into three, into two different grants, one of which we submitted to PSRC's countywide program as well as the regional competition this year. Next slide, please. The document was included as an exhibit. The next step is a public hearing scheduled for June sixteenth, City Council Meeting. State law requires the TIP to approve by, to be approved by June thirtieth. One change this year that I worked with Kim Komodo is that there's no action required today. And that is it. That was my last slide, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, April. Any questions for April? I know, April, that you've been before us multiple times, but I want to thank you and all the departments that you guys do work together and work very hard to keep this updated. And it's always great to see projects come through that either have, you know, are fully grant-funded or have partial grants, because that really helps us to pay for some of these projects that we're doing. So this is a huge step in that process. And I know it takes a lot of work to coordinate and keep this updated. So thank you to everybody that does that. All right, there's no action on this, so we can go ahead and move on. The next thing on the agenda is payment of bills, which all council members receive an email with that information. So we will move on to item number six, which is, I think we're going to hear from Mike Carrington, Terry Smith, and Paula Painter to talk about the Human Capital Management and Automation Project, which is the HCMA.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam President. Madam Mayor, good afternoon. Council members. Mike Carrington, IT Director and one of several executive sponsors on the project. On the call with me today is Terry Smith, our HR Director and Lead Executive Project Sponsor.
Well, not hearing Mike, Tony.
Coming across really jumbled.
Okay, you hear me better now?
That's much better, thank you.
Okay.
If you want to back up and start over, that would be great.
Sure, no problem. I just wanted, started off with a thank you, Madam President, along with Madam Mayor, and said, good, good afternoon to all the council members and yourselves. Mike Carrington, IT Director, one of, one of several executive sponsors on the project. Joining me today is Terry Smith, our HR Director and Lead Project Sponsor, along with Paula Painter, who's also an executive sponsor on the project and the city's Finance Director. I'll be speaking from the summary details that are provided as a part of the motion memo for this agenda item. For your consideration, we've got the HCMA, or Human Capital Management and Automation Project, also known internally at the city as the Workday Project. And that's the name of the software platform that's being deployed. Workday's primary objective is to address current challenges with human capital, or as we refer to it, employee lifecycle management, along with desired improvements to employees' respective benefits management capabilities. That includes scheduling, timekeeping, and, most importantly, payroll accuracy. Council formally approved the HCMA project back in October of twenty nineteen. That was at a cost estimated not to exceed two-point-one-five million at that time. And completion was also targeted for the end of the twenty twenty calendar year. Staff is now proposing related budget transfers and an increase to four-point-three-nine million dollars. And there are two major reasons for this requested change. The first one revolves around the actual contract costs coming in higher than originally estimated. And secondly, the need for reallocation of planned and not unexpected costs from other parts of the city budget. So with that in mind, I'll provide an overview for all of that. Councils familiar with public works projects, where an engineer or architect estimates the cost. Staff bids the project, and the low bid can come in higher or lower than the original estimate. In addition, public works projects almost always have change orders that increase costs during the construction phase. And therefore, the project budget usually includes a contingency. Technology projects are very, very similar this way, in that staff estimates the cost, then the actual contract cost can come in under or over the estimate, not to result in projects that require change orders. The original estimate for the Workday and Collaborative Solutions contracts was one-point-six-three million dollars, with the actual contracts coming in just over two-point-seven-nine million. And a significant reason for the higher cost was the vendor's insistence on including not only the cost of the implementation, but also future annual subscription costs be included and pulled into the contract. Those equated to three full years, based on what was successfully negotiated, with a cost just over two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars per year in subscription costs, and that totaled just over seven-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. So as a result, we need to move expenses that were expected to appear in future operating budgets into the Workday Capital Project to align the contract amounts. The original estimate for contingency by way of change orders, or COs, was two-hundred-thousand dollars. The COs to date have totaled just under three-hundred-thousand dollars. The larger of the two change orders that have come through moved the goal live date from October of this year to December. And that was in part due to COVID-nineteen-related scheduling challenges that we encountered. Other costs beyond ongoing subscriptions that weren't anticipated to appear in the project budget last fall included, number one, a separate but closely related IT capital project called Telestaff. Telestaff at a hundred-and-six-thousand-four-hundred dollars integrates with Workday and makes the system work more effectively for work groups with highly complex schedules and pay calculations, such as the city's police department. And then, secondly, costs associated with the assigned IT project manager would need to be reallocated to Workday. So the ITPM on Workday was originally included in the IT operating budget. The positions transitioned into the HCMA capital project budget is a part of a larger council-approved reallocation that moved portions of all the IT project managers from the IT operating budget to their related capital project budgets. And that's consistent with best practices in capital project budgeting. The original project budget also included funds to hire temporary staff to backfill current staff that would be assigned to the project. The original estimate for this expense was three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, and the actual cost is currently forecasted at just over six-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. This includes coverage for the unexpected departure of the city's accounting and reporting manager, who was performing a critical subject matter expert role on the Workday Project. So with all of these elements coming into play, the revised budget request for Workday includes the following components. The Workday product at nine-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-three dollars. Collaborative Solutions Implementation Services at two-million-one-hundred-and-six-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, which also includes all change orders to date. The Telestaff product at a hundred-and-six-thousand-four-hundred dollars. Staff backfill at six-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. Staffing the project management position at a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars with a revised contingency included for the project at four-hundred-thousand dollars. So funding for this request has been accounted for by way of a combination of the following funds. IT Capital Fund ballots, IT operating accounts, and several, several other capital resource funds. So that summarizes our request, and with that, we're happy to answer any related questions.
Councilmember voice.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, thank you. Mike, thank you very much for the presentation. You know, I think all of us know when you go into the big system and the changes we are going to make, it will have a huge impact years down the road. So it's all about putting that investment in front to make sure we get it right and put a system in place that's going to be around for a long time. My question to you, I understand the change order. I mean, all things happen when you implement new system. How confident are you that, you know, the change order that we have in place now, do you think they're adequate enough to carry us through the end of the project?
Very fair question. The, the project is currently about halfway complete. We've gone through the architecting phase. There have been several builds of an end-to-end system. And we are about to go into a very, very extensive testing phase. So more often than not, what happens on an implementation like this is you, you go through the testing, you find things that either don't work right or need to be tweaked or changed, because they didn't come out quite as you expected. And so you go, you, you make those tweaks or changes, and then you go back through another cycle of testing. So to, the, the short answer to your question is, we're about halfway through the project. And I know, at least from my perspective, and I would definitely, you know, acquiesce to, to especially Terry for, for her, her take on this. From a technology perspective, we feel very confident that we've gotten through, because we've gotten through the architecture, we've gotten through most, if not all, of the major changes that may be needed on this project. The, the other aspects that come into play typically involve the end-to-end testing of this, of the system as a whole, while you're, for instance, running parallel with the existing system. And again, there are things that typically will come to light during that phase, but it is a latter phase on the project. We do have a contingency request of four-hundred-thousand in an effort to try and ensure that we are able to cover anything that, from our professional perspective, we think might come into play. To, to also add on to, to the answer to your question, at this point, I would be very surprised if we have to make deep dips into that contingency amount. So I feel pretty, pretty good about where we are with the project, what we've discovered to date, and that there would not be anything barring something totally unforeseen, any major changes or, or change orders that are significant going forward.
Madam President, one, one follow-up, please, Madam President.
Go ahead.
So, once again, Mike, I'm very familiar with this system. Been on it for a couple of years at my corporation. That's the system we use. And I know it is the right, the right system. And my only advice, and I told you before about this, should please let the, the system drive the process, okay? If we start getting into a process, try the system, we're going to be back where we at today. So my only request, we use a nine to ten, or eight to five fifteen. Let the system drive our process as we implement this new system. Thank you very much.
Uh huh. Yes, sir. Newly noted.
Thank you, Councilmember voice, and I appreciate your expertise and your knowledge of this program as well. Councilmember Cor, you have your hand raised. Councilmember, I see your mic is off, but we can't hear you. Councilmember Cor, are you there? All right, I'm going to move on to Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Who's going first?
I can hear you, go ahead.
All right, so sorry, the question was, Mike, I think I sent an email earlier about, are we postponing the projects where we're pooling funds? Are we going to not have, you know, those projects anymore in the future, or?
With, with regard to HCMA, for instance, the Telestaff project was a separate project. And after quite a bit of debate as to whether or not, because there were so many moving pieces associated with the project, trying to determine the best course going forward left us with two primary paths. One was to continue to run those separately, because, but because HCMA is so intricately dependent upon them, we decided to pull them in. So we are not at the expense of those projects canceling or postponing them. We are simply taking them under the HCMA umbrella.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Thomas.
Eric, can you hear me now?
You can, yeah, go ahead with your.
Oh, good. Thank you, Madam President. So Mike, this is quite a considerable increase over original. But if I heard your presentation correctly, it would almost cause you more to pull out now from what we're doing as to continue with the new system. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct, in, in both hard costs associated with the project and the projects that are supporting it, as well as from a business perspective. We, we have very much crossed the point of no return.
Yeah.
Staff is putting in an amazing effort because of the excitement that they have about how much more efficiently we're going to be able to operate. So I would say on multiple fronts, we are definitely past that point of no return.
All right, then there's not much question to the whole thing. Okay, thank you.
Any other, Councilmember Lamar?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in real quick. You know, like Mike and I have had some conversations about this, and these type of big projects are what I work, my day job as well. And, you know, I, I just continue to feel like this is well within what I would consider reasonable for this type of project. Of this, this is a huge scope and scale. And I've not found anything unreasonable or out of what I would expect for this type of client project.
Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, so if I'm hearing from several of you, there is support to move this forward, establishing a new budget, and then authorizing the mayor to sign all the contracts, change orders, all the documents, not to exceed the project budget. Are there any objections to moving this forward?
No.
Councilmember Fent, do you have a comment or question?
No, I just said none. I have no objections.
All right, wonderful. So anyone else? There are no objections? Great, then we will move that forward to the consent calendar. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like we have come to the end of our agenda. I would like to thank everyone for joining us this evening, and stay safe and have a great night. We are adjourned.